So much for being here for the regular city council meeting and the courses city council for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. I now call this meeting to order at six P M. And please stand for invocation and our attendance, my other very sincere for the greater of the Washington Baptist Church to lead us in our prayer.
Before I pray, I would like to just take this opportunity to just say thank you to this prestigious body and all of its esteemedest members for giving me this privilege to lead you in prayer. Thank you. May we bow our heads and pray. Eternal Father of our soul, grant to the members and offices of this body a sacred moment of brightness to reflect upon that do this this day. Father, we call upon you right now because we are in need of your help. Father, turn our thoughts to you and open our hearts to your spirit, Lord God. Give these offices and members your wisdom in their decisions, understanding in their thinking, love in their attitude, and mercy in their judgment. From this sacred moment of heart searching, may that come such a sweetness of disposition that all may know that you, Lord God, is present in this place. From this holy invocation, may that flow love, may that flow light and joy and power that will remain until the night shall bring forth their whispering benediction to say, "Well done, well done, good and faithful servants." So, Lord, help us through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I do inform for tonight's meeting all councilmen or any tenants except for councilwoman. Right now, I'd like to open the floor to any citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for the citizens. We do allow five minutes. He would come up to the podium and address. Okay? Is no citizen's comments? Moving on to pole business. Consideration and action to approve the meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Mayor, at this time, I would like to make a motion to table this.
The minutes of the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a reason for that? Or, because we know there was a correction online.
Yeah, there's just some things that I need to cover.
Okay. All right, moving on to presentation two. Oh, I'm sorry. You can move ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay? Moving on to our presentation, we're going to do financial reports first, so I have two B. Our financial director, Miss Helen, will be.
Can I have a sit down?
Sure. If you can put the microphone down. If you permission, I'm going to get.
Hello? Yeah.
All right. All right, I'm presenting the quarterly report. We're going to start with October. This is the first quarter financial reports. At the last meeting, I, we discussed that there were some adjustments that had to be made because there were some changes made after the budget was adopted. So, I went back and made all those adjustments and then went back to make the adjustments that were approved by council so we can start with a clean slate. So, all the adjustments have been made. On the spreadsheet, this is, that's the summary for October. We had for the general fund, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars year-to-date revenue and three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars in year-to-date expenditures, leaving a, a balance of five hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. If you take our beginning fund balance from prior year, that's unadjusted, it's sixteen thousand, three seventy-three, and you have add in the five hundred and thirteen thousand, four forty-six, you get a fund balance of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety-one. So, we're starting the year very well. Of course, it's just October, so. If you take the debt service, you look at the budget, our year-to-date revenue is four hundred and twenty thousand, nine fifty-four. In the debt fund, there have been no payments made. Years paid for debt, we pay, make the payments like in March and September, so you, you won't see anything in October. It's during fiscal year to see any expenditures in the debt fund. So, that left a balance of four hundred and twenty thousand, nine fifty-four. Our fund balance from prior year was a hundred and seventeen thousand, nine forty. You take the revenue minus expenditures, that leaves a fund balance of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight ninety-four. The hotel motel budget was two hundred thousand. Year-to-date revenue is twenty-two thousand, six sixty-two. We've expended ninety-three thousand, two thirty-one. There is an overage in revenue minus expenditures, a deficit of seventy thousand, five sixty-nine in October. You take the fund balance of three sixty-four, one forty-five from prior year, minus the seventy thousand, five sixty-nine, that leaves a fund balance in hotel motel tax of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven sixty-six. Street maintenance, our budget is three hundred and fifty thousand. Year-to-date revenue is thirty-seven thousand, three eighteen. Year-to-date expenditures, four thousand, six twenty-seven. Left of revenues minus expenditures is thirty-two thousand, six ninety-one. And the prior year fund balance is one million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, fifty-seven. Revenue minus expenditures, left a fund balance of one million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven forty-eight. The next, four-two-zero, four-three-zero, four-four-zero, which is child safety, court technology, court security. You can see there's not been any activity there. However, we did discover today that there were about, there were entries that had not been made, but they will be starting this fiscal year. There were, there was entries that were going, the deposits were going into general fund, and they have to be moved into these three funds where they're, where it's appropriate. Police officer training, whoops, excuse me, recreational fee, we budgeted eighty thousand. Year-to-date revenue is two thousand, six forty-two. Year-to-date expenditures, one thousand, three oh eight. Left a balance of one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four. Last year, fund balance was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight forty-one, minus the revenues minus expenditures is, leaves a fund balance of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one seventy-five. Go to the enterprise funds for water. Our budget is two hundred, two, two million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four ten. Year-to-date revenue is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars. Year-to-date expenditures is two hundred and twenty-three, eight ninety-nine. Revenue minus, minus the expenditures is twenty-five thousand, one fifty-eight. The prior year fund balance is three million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven thirty-three, minus the current year, fund balance, leaves a fund balance overall, three million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, eight ninety-one. Wastewater, this budget is one million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, six ninety-nine. Year-to-date revenue is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, six oh five. Year-to-date expenditures is a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three eighty-eight. There is a deficit there in wastewater for October, eight thousand, seven eighty-two. Prior year fund balance is two million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, one sixty-five, minus the deficit is, leaves a positive fund balance of two million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three eighty-three. Refuge, and budget is a million, fifty-three, and the year-to-date revenue is ninety-three thousand, seven seventy. Year-to-date expenditures is two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six forty-one, leaving a negative balance of a hundred and ninety thousand, nine seventy-one. Prior year fund balance is negative twelve thousand, seven fourteen. And if you add to prior, current year, you leave having a negative fund balance of two hundred and three thousand, six eighty-five. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, we are having an issue with that cash flow. About, I believe, we're not charging our customers enough money for the, the refuse service that we're providing. And if we continue at this rate, it's just going to continue to grow more and more. We're just not collecting enough. Cemetery budget is twenty-nine thousand. Year-to-date revenue is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and year-to-date expenditures is one thousand, nine sixty-two, for a deficit of one thousand, eight thirty-seven. The prior year fund balance is fifty-eight thousand, three fifty-nine. Revenue minus expenditures, negative one thousand, eight thirty-seven, for a positive fund balance in that account, or that fund of fifty-six thousand, five twenty-two. For A, our budget is a million, ninety-nine, seven fourteen. Year-to-date revenue is forty-five thousand, four seventy-eight. Year-to-date expenditures is three hundred and forty-six thousand, five fifty-three. Revenue minus expenditures is negative three oh one, oh seventy-five. The prior year fund balance is eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, five twenty-three, negative. And if you add the negative fund balance for the current year, three hundred and one thousand, seventy-five, that leaves a negative fund balance of a million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five ninety-eight. For the current year, for For A, most of that is the, the debt. So, what we do is load up the transfer from general fund into that account, and that's why you see that negative fund balance right in the very center. For B, F E D C, budget is one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six twenty-three. Year-to-date revenue is seventy-five thousand, eight oh four. Neg, uh, year-to-date expenditures, a hundred and ninety-one thousand, four fourteen, for a negative fund balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand, six ten. The prior year fund balance, and for For A, a positive one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, five twelve, and subtract out the negative fund balance from the current year of one fifteen, six ten, you get a positive fund balance of one million, one hundred and seventy, seventy thousand, nine oh one. Do you have any questions about October's report?
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to November. I'm not going to repeat everything. What I'm going to let y'all do is look at the report, and y'all basically know how to read it. If you don't, or if you have a question, go ahead and ask me. So, are we at November?
Yes.
Basically, all the funds are carrying the same pattern as far as what's positive and what, what funds have a negative fund balance. If you look at the governmental funds, they're all operating with the exception of court technology with positive fund balances, so that's great. But if you look at the enterprise funds, it's, it's your, the same ones that I just talked about for October, the refuse fund, For A are the two funds that have deficits right now. Any questions on November? Are y'all feeling sorry for me because I'm Philville? December's report, same pattern. Any questions about December?
You've done a lot of work. Thank you.
So, I've identified the three problem areas is refuse fund, For A, and court security. I think we're going to, if we continue at the end of the quarter with the same pattern for, for the other three quarters, I think we'll get general fund with a positive fund balance.
Helen, can you speak to what you've been preparing for this week for the audit, in reference to audit, and bring the council up to speak on that?
Okay. Again, you know, you see numbers, a number is a number, but you need to strive for accuracy in, in finding, last, when we looked at last year's journal entries, there were some entries that weren't made, and again, the bank reconciliations hadn't been done, and we've been working very hard to get to where the numbers are meaningful. And so, the bank reconciliations are caught up, so that's, that's wonderful. You have to have your bank reps done in order to have a good set of books. We're also closing the, the month, the months weren't closed out at the end of the month, so when, at the end of the month, we're giving ourselves five days after the end of the month to close out, to make sure that all the journal entries are being journalized for that month. And, you know, there was no structure, no pattern, so now, now we're doing that. What we did find also is compared to last year, we, we have fifty-something questions this year versus last year, there was like twenty-something questions, so they really increased their, the standard for us, that, you know, I think they're looking for higher quality.
And you anticipate the auditor's to come, right?
The auditor should be here March ninth. We have, when I say we, Randy Holler, our, our financial consultant that's been helping us, CPA, has been helping us, and he has in the past years, and I've gotten to know Randy really well, and he's really doing a great job and a great service for the city, even though, you know, it's an expenditure we may not want. I think he is reasonable for his service that he's providing for the city and has helped us significantly in getting a better fund balance, a better trial balance, and all of that. And that's what we need to see so that we get better ratings when we have, when we have any loans that we need to get. Hopefully, you won't have to get any, but if we had to, it's, it's good to have a, a good fund balance. Also with C D B G grants, that's something that they want us all to have positive fund balances. We were just working with that this past week with the C D B G grant.
Yes, I think, Mayor, you brought it to, you wanted us to bring that forward in reference to response that we hear from for T D A, which is Texas Development and Culture. And so, this evening, Helen, I gave you the email. This evening, we actually answered their questions. I think I've taken copies for everybody, and I can send it to you that answered. Helen, can you read the email that I put over there?
It's an email from John Arkey from T D A for the C D B G grant. He is, he was the program auditor. We're proud to announce it was a letter to Mayor, Mayor Dimple. Thank you for submitting the City of Florisville supplemental information related to T D A's review of the September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen S A and two thousand and nineteen A C F. Related to T D A's review, attach, please find T D A's acceptance letter, yay, for the September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen S A and two thousand and nineteen A C F submissions for your record. So, that, I know that Mr. Turner worked really diligently and to try and address these issues that they had.
Yes, and so, Mayor, you will receive that email, and then I can send it away as a copy of that letter. I believe Mrs. Kenty asked about that as well. And so, in this letter, what we responded to was that what we were going to do is make sure we did zero-based budgeting, which is really, really important. There's also recruitment policy, and then councilmen and teachers were interested that we promised them the pass September in March. And also, I believe there's a financial policy that we said we will also do in service offices and parents, so. And so, that is what we really have to work on and focus. They're saying, yes, we're all good. And T D A is the one who funds our sidewalk, so we definitely want to make sure that we're in compliance. But we did answer that question. It took us some time, and we did copy our auditor, and we had, or put the auditor, Helen herself, and the grant consultant, Blinkford and Associates. So, it was a team effort, but we were able to do that, and they have sent an acceptance letter that you should see in the mail. And then, item, Mayor, is that you received a census, a letter that we raised as an answer. It doesn't have to correct map, and so we will have to be able to do that, but I did respond to that because it had to be responded to by March first.
Right. Thank you.
The next, if we can move on to the banking information?
Thank you.
I'm going to report on what, what amounts of cash are held at Wells Fargo Bank and what investments are held at Texas Class. As of February twenty-first, I just took a snapshot through our Wells Fargo website. We have two million, nine hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents of available balance. I think I had mentioned we've closed seventeen, I mean, seven accounts that did not have any activity for the past twelve months, so this is getting better and more manageable. As you can see, U S D A Water Project and U S D A Wastewater Project, those, those projects are completed, so I don't think we'll have any more expenditures or payouts made from those two accounts. So, what I'll have, what I'll do is move that money into full cash, so that'll increase Texas Class, what we have, the amount we have as of January twenty twenty, we have five hundred and fifty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars, and in the water and sewer fund, we have five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. You can go to the sales tax collections for the first quarter. We have two formats, one's done by fiscal year and the other one's by calendar year. Of course, we're fiscal year, so for October, for current year, we received two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. For November, three hundred and nine thousand, six fifty-five, and for December, three hundred and one thousand, nine forty-two. And people always ask, well, what did we receive last year at the same time? So, this report tells you what we received at the same time last fiscal year. And also doing a reconciliation, I want to make sure that whatever we're receiving is booked into our general ledger, so I'm doing a reconciliation on a quarterly basis to make sure that all our revenue has been booked. The last report is the open item register report, and this shows what we've, what we paid out, or this is the A P. This is everything that has been ordered or through a P O, and it's for October, November, and December. The only big expenditures we had were, was a asphalt expenditure of twenty-two thousand, nine ninety-one, fifty-one. We did some work on Tom Street and Pitt Street, I believe, and so that's why, that's why we have that hard expenditure there. Any questions?
I have a question, I remember.
Yes, sir.
On street maintenance, hope they have enough funds to start other projects?
Um, in our fund balance, it shows that we do have enough money. In the, in the current budget, it does not, and I'm waiting for an amount that we're supposed to receive of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, I think, from Unison. Once we get that, I'll make the budget adjustment to cover that, that account. I think we can, I mean, all we would need to do is move money into that budget, and y'all tell me if it's too early, based on what y'all see here, it's just a quarter's worth of data, so, you know, we could start the planning process, formulate a budget, and then work with that.
Because last year, we started way too late.
Yeah.
So, at the end, we should be proactive and start utilizing those funds and.
Absolutely.
Start the streets.
Yeah. Yeah, with, with good planning, you, you know, you can do that.
And, and, you know, a question to the manager on the street maintenance, did we have any issues concerning the, the vendors?
Actually, we did not. We had no change or at all, and they were able to complete what they needed to do along the streets. I do recommend that we actually start by identifying the next set of streets that you want to make it to do, because we want to make sure that we have it, we have the system back up, and wherever we think that we need to be backed up, but I think, I had to make sure I talked to the pastor at the end of the day, because that he rolled down, plumb street was nice and smooth, and so we need to have the rest of the street feel nice and smooth as well. So, if you can identify them as we go forward, and remind them that the corsets of sales taxes on, references on the agenda for voting, on the ballot, for page second, and so that's really going to be imperative that we have that to pass so that we can use those funds that we do that, and if, for instance, if we don't get it, the state gives it, it goes back to the state. So, we want to make sure that we don't lose that opportunity to add to that line.
Henrietta, yes, and I, and I strongly urge the council to, to be proactive on this issue so, so we could improve the, the streets, and that is one of the issues that this city has problems, and the streets. The, the street maintenance does consist of problems, and there are many problems, many, many, many. And I ask Henrietta that you work with the council on this issue, and we, we are doing very good, but I mean, you know, that, that we still could have to make progress on those issues. Thank you very much. I admire your work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Helen?
Thank you, Ms. Helen.
I also want to say thank you, Helen, for working so hard, and giving us the correct reports and.
I will say that they're a lot easier to read than English things, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is.
Thank you. No further questions? We'll move on to item two A, the C board membership presentation. We have the director, Ben Reed, with us.
Mayor, council, if you're allowing me to come up here. I'm going to ask if Fred can come up real quick? And the rest of the.
I know. Real quick.
Okay, real quick. And the rest of the board can come as well? Dan, Jake, Roy, and Charlotte? So, I got a cheat sheet, right? So, I didn't want to read the will, because I, thinking back on everything we've done over the years, and the role model who's been to this entire board, not just myself, just want to kind of go over a few, and I want to start by saying, I want to redefine these words, I am not quitting, or am I resigning? I am simply not re-enlisting. So, I want to thank Fred for all his service to the City of Florisville and the Florisville Economic Development Corporation over these past years. Want to talk about some of the accomplishments he's done over the years that I saw when I was on the sideline, and as a, as a board member with him, as his treasurer, as he was our vice president and one of our leaders. It started out many years ago with the early, early college. You know, he was, he was a visionary for the youth to make sure that our kids always had the proper education moving forward, because we always talk about having like a twenty-first century learner at the school, so provide those services for them. And then, from that with the youth, bring towards the vision of our sports complex, having our youth a safe place to play sports, and from there, went on to different things like the skate park, which you can see is being used all the time, and it's really grown that area, made it a safer place, I think, over the years. And from there, we didn't forget about every aspect of our population. We did the Apollo Place, the senior apartments, provided affordable housing for everyone, regardless of age, and I think where they had, where they were really visionarians and coming along over the years was during the Eagle Ford, and not overgrown our town, but growing our town at a right pace to where now, when we have these peaks and valleys, we're not overgrown, and we're now ripe for growth again, which when they did the different hotels like Quinta, the Holiday Express. And from there, with the economic growth, you just see what they've done. Look at the McCoys area with putting that street in the intersection, and you, you have these great businesses in front from A T and T to the Sorritos restaurant that has come in and helping the future, and then you see the places like Autozone and O'Reilly's. But I think some of the more important things was with our community and seeing the vision of the future, right? So, they, they helped bring the apartments on full in place, and that's amazing, because if you saw that, I think you hear the stories, I think Erin was the second person to move in there, so she benefited from that, but you see the amount of people that come in those apartments, I think over fifty different apartments, and they're, they're almost full. So, having the place for people to come and to continue to grow our town was just amazing. They were ahead of everyone. And kind of last, I won't take up all the time, but I think they never forgot the heart, they never forgot the heart of Florisville, which is our downtown. So we talked about that being a quaint place, a little town. So I think the vision they see that we're going to continue on with the board is continue to reinvest in our downtown to shine, because that, as they always say, and I was just from Henrietta, the last few months is, you know, when Walmart comes, it kills your downtown, but we survived that, and we have nothing to do but grow forward and, and grow from our downtown. So with that, from, from our board, we would like, and the City of Florisville, I'd like to read this, it says Alfredo Fred Q Gonzalez, and let me, let me get his real boss up here real quick.
She's a real boss.
We were talking about it, talking on the side of it, I think she showed up tonight. So you can't forget, the real one that allowed him to share them with us over all these years to come. Alfredo Fred Gonzalez, thank you for sharing your skills and knowledge to help improve the community of Florisville over the years. But thank you most of all for the experiences you gave and the people you touched with your compassion and love for the City of Florisville. And it has a city logo as well as Unison.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, leave it up here.
You have a few, Fred, you have some words, and then we take a picture.
Fred, not talking.
As you well know, over the last several years, I have to kind of write my stuff down, so I don't forget what I'm going to say, nor ramble. So I have just a few words. Before I do that, though, it wasn't, what Ben was talking about was a team effort, and has been for years. I've been here with him since '09, and it was the council, somebody still here, Ben, Gloria, and other people that have gone on, Gloria over here, and the mayor. So it's been a team effort, I've had the opportunity and the, the privilege, I guess, and the joy of working with the city, and I don't intend to stop, I'm just not going to be on books. Now, let me say a few words. I've lived a long life, I'm not quitting now. And it's been a long, wonderful life, that's not to say in these who want, as you know, by any stretch. I've been fortunate to have skills and gumption to do things, and most importantly, to have Olivia as my life partner. I have received much recognition at every face of my life, heavy duty stuff, yet I think nothing exceeds, exceeds what's happening here today. Why? Because of who I am and where I am today. Over the last several years, I've experienced some health deficiencies, but probably the most important factor is that I'm doing what I do, why I started, Florisville, who I am, and that is a fighter and a contributor. And I thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all want to come, we'll get a group photo? We don't want to. Oh, yeah, we're going to do it up here. We'll get a group photo. Watch your step. We're going to get a group photo, we don't want to. 62 here, right?
Sixty years of marriage.
I'll do it here, so here, you're going to hold. That's fine, we're just like.
Thank you.
I am everywhere.
Henrietta, thank you so much for your help. You've been buggered.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you so much for everything. Thank you again. Moving on to item 3A, new business, consideration action to approve proclamation 2020-004 for the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. And I will read that proclamation before we have any comments or questions. Whereas the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, the oldest African-American church in the City of Florisville, will celebrate its 128th church anniversary on March 15th of 2020. Whereas the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church was organized in 1892 and is located on Highway 96 East in the City of Florisville. Whereas the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, under the leadership of Reverend Larry C. Smith, pastor, who strongly believes that the church is built on love. Whereas the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church has continued to prosper and has contributed to the Florisville community by providing spiritual enrichment through worship services and community involvement. Whereas the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church members are the cornerstone of Florisville. Whereas the 128th anniversary celebration affords an opportunity to recognize the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church accomplishments and contributions to our community. And whereas the City of Florisville is preparing to transfer ownership of the city cemetery number two, locate, excuse me, located on Plum Street, to the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, who will continue the legacy of honoring Florisville community members. Whereas the City of Florisville is indebted to the Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church for 128 years of service, and wish to express our deep appreciation and gratitude. Counsel, we do have Reverend Larry Smith and his beautiful wife with us this evening. Any comments or questions concerning the proclamation?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve this proclamation, 2020-004.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much. I have the proclamation here, do I need to sign it down?
We have to have two copies, and then one that we can put into the official record, and then one we can actually present for the 15th at the ceremony.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Yes, ma'am. 15th of March, we're contacting, is the ceremony, is it in the afternoon service?
It's 3:30.
3:30. And by the count to come, if you can make it in time.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item 3D, consideration action to approve resolution 2020-011, South Texas Home and Garden Show. We have our city manager, but also, we also really have a representative.
Actually, we have representatives who brought us some wonderful, no, really good flowers. Would like to come and present and talk about the show.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, thanks for having us and for the proclamation. We do have our event next Saturday, the 7th, at the Event Center. It's the South Texas Home Garden and Environmental Show, but it encompasses everything. We will have vendor booths there, we are completely full, there's no more space for anymore, which is the first time that has happened. We will have small crafters, we will have large vendors, most everything revolves around either small business owners, or things that are environmentally friendly, solar panels, solar screens, all of those kind of things. We have the Master Gardeners of South Texas, that will also be doing their plant sales, as well as they help support the plant giveaway that we have in the morning. We also have a silent auction, with a whole lot of items that have been donated by local businesses. And then we have a concession stand as well. All the proceeds for those things outside of the Masters Gardeners Group go to help promote and supply all the products for the school gardens that we have here in Houston County. So we're very proud to be able to do that, to show kids, you know, that they can grow things, they can make things with their hands, they can, you know, see the fruits of their labor, and, and that's kind of what it's all about, so. And you guys have flowers, I hope you enjoy them, some of them are really fragrant, because they've been in my truck, and my truck now smells like hyacinth, but please enjoy them, we hope they flourish in your homes or in your yards.
Thank you for the flowers. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments concerning?
Want to get a photo with your whole flowers, if you don't mind?
Well, you want to propose?
Let's do the resolution first.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve this resolution, 2020-001.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by J.D. Menace. Any citizens' comments? And if not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the resolution does read, "A resolution of the City of Florisville, Texas, in support of the South Texas Home and Garden Show Annual Event, March 7, 2020, at the Lauro Delion Florisville Event Center, from 11:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m." That's not correct, is it?
Nine to six.
Nine to six. Okay, we'll fix that. Thank you very much, ma'am. I think you said you wanted a picture.
Yes.
Why don't you come on up here with us? We'll look down.
Steal under file. I'll give it back.
Last time you hold a statue, you got your whole flower.
All ladies, all again.
I feel like I'm in a wedding.
Thank you.
Thanks again, these are beautiful.
One more, one more.
Let me take off, beautiful, let me take off my head.
All the people are. Ready, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Very welcome.
Moving on to item 3C, consideration action to award the bid for downtown sidewalk improvements, TXCDG project number 728092. Henrietta, Ms. Turner, and the chairman of the chair.
We have Russell from the Treppet here, who can speak to it, I think you have it in your passage, and we'll let this here sit there.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Russell Luschkin, I'm with the Treppet Surveying and Engineering. We're here on the, on behalf of answering questions on the downtown sidewalk improvement project. Bids were received and opened on February 25th at 9:00 a.m. We received two bids. We have a bid tabulation that you should have in front of you showing both bids. The low bidder was SLP Constructors with a total bid of $278,123. We reviewed the contractors' bid documents, and to the best of our knowledge and belief, SLP Constructors had the lowest and best qualified bid, so it's our recommendation that with your approval, we award the bid to SLP Constructors for that amount. Any questions? Sorry, Henrietta, you have a follow-up?
Yes, we, we were happy to have the two bids. The meeting is a pretty local, it's within Florisville, it's not within Florisville, but it's within Florisville County, and so that's going to afford us to be able to have the meeting and take the time and energy we need to do as we replace it for the businesses and the meeting meetings that we have to have coming forward. So with your approval tonight, we'll move forward and hopefully be able to start construction sometime in mid-March.
We have all the funds in the appropriate places?
Yes, EDC has already transferred their $50,000. To do that, there's a city match that we have to do, our pursuit of income and about funding, I think about $15,000, and then decide whether, yes, the funding is definitely there.
So what is the total that we have?
The total that we have is in excess of, I think it's $330,000.
So we're going to have a balance?
Well, when we get to pay the engineer and the overage of what we have, there will be no balance, we'll be able to fund this. So the city had to make a contribution of $15,000, and some staff, because we have to be able to demolish and help them with the demo. EDC kicked in with a match of $50,000.
And then we're going to also bring it to the board in March, we want to put some lights maybe in the sidewalk, because we got one shot to really rebrand our downtown, so something that I talked about before, but the local contractor, when we talk after the bidding, they could, while they're prepping it, they can run the conduits, so we could put some light in, lighting it for safety and to let it burn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this person has been on the way, and I have been working with Russell, thank you very much for all the updates that he has been giving.
Yes, sir.
And I have been very anxious to start this project, because the community is waiting for it.
Yes, sir.
And I just would like to say thank you, thank you, Henrietta, the council, businesses, and all the parties, FADC, FADC is a big provider on this, and I just like to say that this is phase one, hopefully we'll start phase two, Miss Henrietta?
Yes, so one of the things, and your council, you want us to apply, it happened in October, but Russell said he couldn't apply until we had started this project, so the next time to apply would be in October. We are, we are poised to apply, and hopefully everything will go well with this project, and we're ready to start phases one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, I think there are nine in this.
So we're talking about millions and millions of dollars, ladies and gentlemen, that would just help, you know, this thing, you know, find itself to the ground, so I just want to say thank you, and thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve your work, bid for downtown sidewalk improvements.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Let's get it going.
Moving on to item 3D, consideration action to accept the resignation of 4A Corporation Board Member Roy Idris.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Idris has decided to step down from this board only, of you participating in all other boards, but he has opted to resign from the 4A board.
I move to accept the resignation of the board from Mr. Idris.
I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, as well as for Ortiz. Any citizens' comments?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm the staff of the OPR present. My name is Gloria Greck, I live on 474th Street in Florisville, and I'm a member of the board that requested to be replaced. As you understand, 4A is on its way to move forward and do better, and they're going to make progress. They're working with 4B, which is a member, in partnership also, so things are going to get much, much better for 4A, and I would like to thank you all for the time you allow me to serve during the time of 4A, and I will continue to help from 4B, from wherever it may be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Idris, and thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
Roy, I would like to thank you for the, all the work you do, all the time.
All the time, yes, thank you so much. Moving on to item E, consideration action. Do we have a vote on that item? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item E, consideration action. Do we have a vote on that item? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item E, consideration action. Do we have a vote on that item? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item E, consideration action. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item E, consideration action to appoint members to the four A Corporation. There are two empty, two vacancies to include a reappointment or current members appointment to fill vacancies and or replace existing members.
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Kira Esteban.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Ortiz. I have a second by Mrs. Kim too. Any citizens' comments?
What is the name?
If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you so much. And congratulations to Kira.
I believe she's in the audience here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Kira Esteban? There you go. There you go. Thank you and welcome to the four A. Okay, um, there's two vacancies, but we only are filling that one.
One, yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to item F, consideration and action to accept the resignation of F E C, F E D C Board Member Sherri Casfield.
I move to accept the resignation of the F E D C Board Member Sherri Casfield.
I'm sorry. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Martinez. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Sorry. Moving on to item G, consideration action to appoint F E D C, two vacancies to include any reappointment of current members, appoint to fill vacancies and or replace existing members. This is listed under Mrs. Turner.
If you have any recommendations, I know we have had, in your package, you had some applications that were interested in F E D C, we have two vacancies this time. Can we go ahead and do the both of them or do we have to do just one at a time?
We have to do one at a time.
Okay, this time I would like to go ahead and appoint Mr. David Del Bosque to the F E D C board.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for one of their vacancies, Mr. Bosque. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kim too. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And then do the second one?
Yes. I have another applicant and her name, it's Leana M. Martinez. I would like to appoint her as our F E D C Board Member also.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Martinez. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by J K Menace. Any citizens' comments? If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I'm going to abstain.
Moving on to item H, consideration and action to appoint to the hiking bike trailer committee, one position to include any reappointment or current members, appointment to fill vacancies and or replace existing members.
Now, Mayor, I believe in your package, you have one applicant. There's one vacancy on the track.
Counsel, you have that application in there?
Yes.
Does everybody have it in their package?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion on the floor by counsel?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
That's for the hiking bike?
Yes, sir.
So move, Madam Mayor, to, to nominate the one and only one.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Counselor Ortiz. Do I have a second?
Oh.
Okay. I have a down second. The motion dies, I guess, for lack of a second. Do I have any motions on the floor? Okay, do I have, how do I handle that if there is no, then there's no action? That concludes our meeting tonight. For the business on the agenda, this reading is now concluded at six fifty-four.